I am really excited that we are welcoming Arts Education in Maryland Schools here today to talk about the arts education landscape in the state of Maryland. They are incredible partners who work very hard with multiple stakeholder groups to try to bring the work to the attention of the public and to make sure that all of our children have robust programming in the arts and to help us troubleshoot in those places where we don't have that robust programming. So, super excited to see them here today. I have been lucky enough to work with them on a panel discussion and will be on another panel discussion talking about education policy and levers that drive that policy in June. So, glad to see you guys here.
Great. So, want again welcome Ms. McGrane and Mr. Dayton. So, please, as you feel, whenever you're ready.
All right. Thank you, President Crawford, Ms. McCusker, Vice President Michael, and members of the Board. Thank you so much for having us here today. My name is Rachel McGrane, and I'm the Executive Director at Arts Education in Maryland Schools, commonly known by our acronym as AIMS. And I'm joined by my colleague Peter Dayton, Director of Operations. First, I want to begin by congratulating Dr. Wright on being selected by the Board to continue on as Superintendent. We look forward to working with you in service of Maryland students. At last month's Board meeting, Dr. Wright celebrated Arts in Our Schools Month and talked about the vibrant impact that arts education has on our students and entire school communities. She mentioned the critical role that the arts play in public education, and we at AIMS could not agree more. We envision a public education system in Maryland that supports, cultivates, nurtures, and uplifts all students' creativity through a robust arts education experience so they can thrive in a healthy society. The arts offer unique ways to learn, connect, and engage with the world around us. As Ms. McCusker emphasized in her remarks last month, learning through the arts does support students' brain development and academic achievement, and it feeds our souls and helps us find commonality and connection with one another. The arts unlock all different parts of the brain, and they can help us find a sense of belonging. The arts help children become the best versions of themselves while also preparing them for college and career. Because of this immense power and potential of the arts, AIMS is committed to ensuring that all students in the state of Maryland have access to high-quality arts education. We aspire to accomplish this by mobilizing power to communities through advocacy programs, professional and leadership programs, and resource building and sharing. We're grateful for this opportunity to share our work with you all today and offer some tools and resources to guide you in your support of arts education. To first give you a quick sense of who AIMS is, myself, Peter, and the other two members of our staff are Alyssa Gittens and Patrick O'Reilly, who help make everything you're about to hear about possible. We also have a wonderful Board of Directors, Emeritus Board members, and a large web of collaborators. This slide gives you just a little glimpse into the sprawling nature of our collaborative work. I know the text is very small, not intending for you to read every single word, just want to kind of give you a glimpse of some of the partnerships and work that we do together. So, we are members of the Maryland Education Coalition and Blueprint Coalition, following and providing testimony where appropriate to the Legislature and the AIB. We collaborate with MSD on a number of projects that you'll hear about later, including the Arts Ed Data Project, Maryland Center for Creative Classrooms, and the Fine Arts Education Advisory Panel. We work directly with educators to collect their feedback and share resources, and we convene and collaborate with the four arts professional organizations, Maryland Music, Art, Dance, and Theater Educator Associations, on advocacy and professional development. Just like performing in an ensemble or putting on a production, our work ensuring all students have access to high-quality arts education is stronger together. We again are grateful to be here to engage with you all on this collective work towards improving arts education opportunities for students in our great state of Maryland. Over the course of the last year, there have been significant structural improvements at MSD in response to advocacy by AIMS in collaboration with the four professional associations I just mentioned. This advocacy has taken the form of letters to the Superintendent, State Board of Education, the Governor, which have all been followed up by collaborative work with MSD staff, including, but certainly not limited to, Dr. Collins, Susan Spinato, and Lizzie Deveraux. From last year to this year's Arts in Our Schools Month, we are happy to report the following. After about a year and a half vacancy in the Fine Arts Department at MSD, the new comprehensive arts education branch is now staffed with both a full-time director and coordinator and additional support from teaching and learning, who have been doing excellent work, including the convening of LEA arts leads from around the state. As Dr. Wright mentioned last month, some of this work includes mapping out arts pathways to align with the blueprint. There's a lot of ground to make up here because of the long vacancy in this department, but they are moving full speed ahead, and I hope that you all will be able to hear a bit more about some of this work directly from Lizzie Deveraux and her team in the coming months. The Fine Arts Education Advisory Panel, a COMAR-required body, was also re-impannled after about a year and a half hiatus to advise the Superintendent. This group is currently co-chaired by myself and Carl Stewart, who is the Supervisor of Visual and Performing Arts for Carroll County Public Schools and represents all five arts disciplines of dance, media arts, music, theater, and visual art, and all geographic regions of the state. The scope of members' roles in the arts and education range from school-based educators and principals to LEA-wide fine art supervisors to leaders in statewide community and professional organizations. And our student member is your very own Avi Sola. The panel sent out our first set of recommendations to Dr. Wright at the end of March, which focus on suggestions for supporting the increasing number of conditionally-certified arts teachers in Maryland schools. We know she's working with staff at MSD on a plan, and we look forward to her response and next steps. Another effort that has now been completed is the addition of an elementary theater education certification. Previously, this certification was only available at the secondary level, but now, starting in July, it will extend down to the elementary level, thereby providing more opportunities for theater staffing in the younger grades. Finally, we are encouraged by the improved communication from MSD leadership over the course of the last year, as all of these improvements have been taking shape, and we look forward to continued communication and collaboration with Dr. Wright and MSD leadership. All of these structural improvements have strengthened the position of the arts within MSD. However, there are still many issues and challenges to ensuring that all students have robust access to this critical component of their education. Before we dive into some more specifics, I'm going to hand it over to my colleague Peter to share what COMAR and the blueprint have to say about the arts.
Good morning, everyone. Again, thank you so much. As we get deeper into blueprint implementation, it's important to remember that the arts are core curriculum, and this is not only enumerated in the federal Every Student Succeed Act, but is part of the Code of Maryland Regulations. We share this information in all of our presentations that we do to advocates and families and at professional association conferences. According to COMAR, students in pre-K through 12 are required to have access to arts learning in all five arts disciplines that Rachel just enumerated: visual arts, dance, media arts, music, and theater. And this breaks down by grade level into pre-K to 5 having experiences in all of the five arts disciplines, and within grades 6 through 12, a choice of courses from five arts disciplines, and then accredited to graduate high school. One of the biggest challenges that we see on the advocacy front is that COMAR's fine arts regulations are not being adhered to across the state. At least two different deficits, we believe, contribute to this, and many more. A lack of awareness, I think that this regulation even exists for the arts, but also a belief that the arts are comparatively unimportant when having to manage difficult decisions navigating an insufficient school budget. We know that administrators are making tough decisions, and so, we understand that that is always a calculation they have to make, but we do believe the arts are maybe more important than they seem to end up on the budget line item. An expression of this administrative culture that devalues the arts that we see can be seen in terminology used around the state in various school systems to refer to the arts within school scheduling: specials, resources, enrichments. All of these are terms that seem to suggest that the arts are a frivolous add-on to the core experience of learning, when in fact, they are required and they are core to students' learning and human development. One of AIMS' first points of advocacy after the blueprint was passed into law was to advocate for the inclusion of language that links the priorities of the blueprint with the existing COMAR regulations. We have been engaged and actively advocating for the arts since the inception of the blueprint within the Kerwin Commission, and throughout that process, we understand that the intent of the blueprint is not to cut programs, but rather to invest in more opportunities for students. But we are also aware, as implementation gets underway, that this intent is being subverted in some LEAs, and that the arts are being listed on multiple occasions as casualties to increased local costs. We know that a world-class education includes the arts. When there are big reforms like the blueprint, there are always unintended consequences, and one way that we've worked to address the unintended consequences of the blueprint was by advocating for specific language in the statewide comprehensive implementation plan that called out the arts. And this advocacy was successful on the presentation. You can see the two of the areas where language that explicitly calls out the arts was inserted into the comprehensive implementation plan, and that's, I think those are both in 3.1.1B. The blueprint is not intended to alter the need for the arts, and there's an explicit link between blueprint funding and COMAR fulfillment that includes the arts.
So, as you can, oops, forgot to turn that on. So, as you can see, there's great potential and possibility for the arts, given our existing policies and structures, and knowing how critical the arts are to realizing the vision set forth by both the blueprint and the State Board of Education for all students to have access to a world-class educational system. However, as Peter started to describe, there are significant challenges arising during implementation that we want to make sure that you are all aware of and offer our support and partnership to address. There's a significant emphasis throughout the blueprint legislation and implementation work on standardized tested subjects. One unintended consequence of this is the misperception, as Peter described, that the arts are dispensable and therefore become subject to cuts through budgeting or scheduling. In reality, the arts support students' learning in those tested subjects, in addition to all of the other benefits that they provide. So, a narrow interpretation of the blueprint mandates is jeopardizing arts access in some schools and districts already. Similarly, the emphasis on college and career readiness by 10th grade is in some cases jeopardizing access to and continuity of learning in the arts. The work that Lizzie Deveraux is doing with LEA arts leads is helping to address this by creating new arts pathways, but the many requirements being placed on students are still making it more difficult, in many cases, to participate in sequential arts programs as part of their core education. I invite you to think back to the students at Chrisfield High School from the video shown last month. They were able to create that sense of family and cultivate student leadership, in part because those students were able to participate in band for multiple years in a row, regardless of their aspirations to become professional musicians, or simply to become part of a group and something larger than themselves. Scheduling is so important to the continuity and quality of arts courses. We must be diligent to ensure that schedules are preserved amidst implementation of new opportunities provided by the blueprint. And now, here's another one, again, that Peter alluded to. We are seeing this in action right now during local budgeting processes. As LEAs are figuring out the very difficult process of how to meet budget goals that accomplish specific blueprint mandates, some are considering cuts to arts education unless it is specifically protected in local policies. This has also been reported on in the public, further putting the inaccurate idea that the arts are expendable into the public mindset. We've provided testimony and letters on the local level to inform and remind LEAs that the arts are required by COMAR, protected in the blueprint, and critical for students' development and well-being. A positive example, in Baltimore City, the arts are explicitly laid out in school budget guidance, and for the last two years, over $2 million of concentration of poverty and ESER funds were allocated specifically for the arts. This is a great example of how the blueprint can work for, and not against, increased opportunities for a world-class education. We are also seeing new challenges to the higher education pipeline for teacher recruitment, especially because of new teacher preparation requirements, and we've begun to address this a little bit through our work with the Fine Arts Education Advisory Panel, but there's, again, much more work to be done to strengthen arts teacher recruitment and retention. And finally, one new issue that's emerging that we're starting to hear about is the consolidation of school and district-based leadership teams, which in some cases is taking away leadership opportunities for arts teachers and leaving them without a seat at the decision-making tables for things like scheduling and budgeting, which is so important for the arts. Maryland's educators bring a wealth of expertise and passion to making sure students have access to all the arts opportunities they deserve, so we need to make sure that they are positioned to advocate for the practices that will support these opportunities. We know that the arts support the blueprint's transformative goals for students, and we also know that when school and district leaders are charged with explicit goals and specific subjects like ELA and math, the arts can and have already, in some cases, started to be forgotten, rather than incorporated into a well-rounded educational approach. AIMS stands ready to continue our collaborative work to ensure that all children have access to a robust arts education as part of a world-class education. Many of these issues that we just shared, that we're seeing related to the blueprint, are also echoed in feedback we've collected directly from educators. Peter will now share our processes and highlights for qualitative and quantitative data collection regarding arts education quality and access.
AIMS has been convening arts educators since 2019 in order to learn about the challenges they face in the classroom from administration, about how AIMS can better support their work, and about their stories of the transformative power of the arts on the students in their classrooms and in their communities. Using information from these meetings, spanning approximately a year each, AIMS has compiled that information, then published reports that highlight the commonalities being experienced across Maryland's arts educators. Some of the main highlights that we have seen from this most recent round are things that we have already alluded to in a number of earlier slides and statements. Among them, that the arts seem to be undervalued within their own school communities as both a valid area of learning and as a career pathway, that there are issues with arts educator recruitment and retention among, as we know, educator recruitment and retention more broadly. There are lots of concerns about the effects of the implementation of the blueprint on arts funding and access. Funding for arts programs has been a perennial issue. Adequate and designated facilities, I stressed "facilities," but I should have stressed "designated" because we've heard most recently a lot about rooms being taken away from teachers, even though they're designed for a specific kind of arts learning, they're being repurposed for non-art's learning. Compensation for arts educators, which we know is one of the areas being addressed in the blueprint more broadly for educators, and student behavioral issues and paraeducator support. We will be releasing another report probably in this coming late fall from collection for this year, and our most recent report was released in November, and I believe is one of your handouts, but this and our other reports are available through the AIMS website. Another initiative that AIMS has undertaken to better clarify the state of arts education in Maryland's schools is the Maryland Arts Education Data Project. This is a series of interactive data dashboards available on the AIMS website, along with navigation resources that will help you all, advocates, administrators, and families around the state, keep tabs on enrollment and access trends. We are so grateful for the collaboration of MSD in bringing this project to Maryland. Quadrant Research is the vendor which displays this data, but this is a direct collaboration with the State Department of Education, and we're incredibly grateful for the liaising of Dr. Collins, of Lizzie Deveraux, of Susan Spinato, and in the data office, Tracy Duzblon, without whom this would not have taken place at all. As we have prepared some of the educational and promotional materials about this data project, we've been in contact with a number of LEA arts leads. This has also provided important qualitative and historical context to the numbers-based data, and we look forward to continuing the conversations that we have begun and the meaningful questions that this data has allowed us to begin to dive into. The data dashboards give information on the state, county, and individual school level about student enrollment in and access to arts courses, arts staffing, course offerings, and student demographics in all of Maryland's public and traditional public and charter schools. This graphic illustrates the cycle for data collection processing and then publishing. This is an annual process and based on the publishing-to-collection cycle, sort of an ongoing process. The dashboards currently show data starting in school year 2018 to 2019 and up through school year '21 to '22. School year '22, '23 data will be transferred sometime in late summer or early fall. The data displayed on the dashboards comes from Maryland's longitudinal data sets, so this is coming from information that LEAs have reported to the state, which the state has then worked with LEAs to verify. This then goes to the vendor for another set of verification before finally being published. And we are continuing to have conversations with MSD and with LEAs as questions arise about some of the data. Maryland, however, in the process of bringing this information public, has been leaps and bounds ahead of many other states who have discovered, in the process of publishing data, that there is a lot of work that they need to do to make their systems uniform. Maryland is in a very good place as far as the way LEAs and MSD have harmonized to make consistent reporting. Some of the highlights just from the release of this data, the platform was published on April 2nd, so it's very new, but we have been working with the data for several months in preparing for this. Access to some form of arts education is essentially universal in Maryland's public schools, which is wonderful. Currently, more than 80% of students are enrolled in an arts course in any of the five disciplines. This is greater enrollment than numerous other states have in the arts and greater access, so congratulations, we're doing great, but there is room for improvement. All schools offer, all school districts offer music, visual arts, and theater, which are three out of the five COMAR-required arts disciplines. However, only 2/3 of school districts offer media arts, and only 2/3 of school districts offer dance, which means that there are eight school districts each that are not compliant with COMAR in meeting all five arts disciplines to make those available for their students. Within music, one of the questions we always get from music advocates is not about music access, but performance and performance versus general music courses. We note that, while about half of Maryland's public school students have access to a general music course, significantly fewer have access to opportunities for instrumental performance, and about half of that have opportunities for vocal performance. We want to emphasize again that we are available for follow-up. We would love to be able to share more data, as well as more about the process by which we present this information and the verification process that we go through, some of the ways that we are trying to ensure that this data is accurate, and we want to emphasize again that the data points are encouraging, but if the aspiration enumerated in the blueprint is that Maryland has a world-class education, it won't be world-class if arts education access shrinks amid the transformations that are going to happen because of the blueprint. We hope and are happy to be active partners in ensuring that arts education access and enrollment only grows.
As we aspire towards this world-class education for Maryland students, AIMS is also proud to sponsor the Maryland Center for Creative Classrooms, thanks to a fine arts initiative grant from MSD. This program allows us to provide innovative professional learning that's responsive to the needs of educators across the state. This year, that includes a media arts master class, which is currently wrapping up and is guiding teachers to use AI tools to stimulate, rather than obfuscate, students' creativity. As you all have discussed before, AI is here to stay, and this program has allowed participating teachers to be on the cutting edge of using AI to support art. There are a number of other course offerings, just wanted to highlight that one in particular. Finally, as Ms. McCusker mentioned at the beginning, we invite you to the Maryland Arts Summit in June, which is a two-day convening of Maryland's arts sector. AIMS is curating an arts education advocacy track, which Ms. McCusker will be joining us for as panel speaker, and the conference as a whole is a great opportunity to engage with the incredible artists in our state and learn more about the many professional arts pathways that students can pursue when provided with a robust arts education. In closing, I want to thank you all again for your time, for your service, and for your dedication to Maryland students. AIMS is grateful for this opportunity to share our work with you, and we are happy to answer any questions and stay in communication as we all work to ensure that every student in the state of Maryland has access to a rigorous and world-class educational experience. I'll close very briefly with a quote from Rain Dietrichs, National Art Education Association's national rising star, whose artwork is outside, from an interview on the podcast Art Scene, hosted by Queen Anne's County Supervisor of Visual and Performing Arts, Michael Bell. Rain said, "I don't want to limit myself, I want to create the stories that I want to tell, and I'm so lucky to have an art teacher who lets me do that." Thank you.
Excellent. Excellent. Really, really appreciate this and your presentation and following last month with the video. I've had several people approach me about the video. Thank you so much for keeping arts education front and center as we go forward, and again, to underscore the importance of arts education in developing the whole child. I want to open the floor up for comments or questions from the board. Dr. Getty and then Dr. Michael.
I think when you describe the state of dance instruction across Maryland, 16 out of 24 school districts is almost 70%, but I think if you did it on a per-school basis, that percent would go way down. So, if a school system offers dance in one high school, that's not the same as every high school, every middle school, every elementary school. So, that's my first comment, just asking you, is my perception correct?
Yes.
Okay, so my...
Go ahead.
May we follow it further, because that is exactly the kind of data nuance that, the nuance point that we, in some of our educational and promotional materials about the data project, have attempted to elucidate, that a single data point usually isn't going to tell you, absolutely give you a comprehensive picture. And in fact, one of our examples was about, I believe, Washington County, and showing how there is fairly robust access from a percentage of the student population standpoint, but that's concentrated at essentially, half of that number is concentrated at a single arts magnet school. And so, we have that as an example of how you need to dig deeper, and usually, one data point will give an insufficient picture. For me, as one of the people who prepared and researched a lot of the data points for our promotional materials, I always found that data points rarely answered questions, but instead clarified the question for further investigation.
My comment is, as an internship coordinator, at the end of my career, I was successful in getting art internships, music internships, but was always denied, dance internships, based on the fact that the prerequisite classes weren't in the high school, therefore, the student didn't qualify, although they were engaged in the community dance studio. So, it was a denied opportunity. Okay, so my question to you is, what are the barriers to dance being more prominent in our school systems?
To very, very broadly answer the question, my answer would be scheduling and budgeting. And that comes down to, depending on the district, that's a school decision. That can also be influenced, you know, by district guidance. So, for example, in Baltimore City, we're members of the Baltimore Arts Education Initiative, so we're especially tuned in to what's going on there. There's been an increase in access to arts education, and in particular, music and visual art, over the last five years, and that has been because of explicit budget guidance that advocates pushed for the city to adopt. So, the city adopts the budget guidance, sends it out to the principals, and then they are able to figure it out and make it work in order to provide more openings for arts staffing to increase. So, there's a lot of factors, but I would say, very big picture, budgeting and scheduling are the two big ones.
Thank you.
Yeah. And also, I just want to say thank you for bringing up the community arts piece, because the data project specifically really focuses on those courses, and you just gave a great example of why we do need courses in addition to the great and robust community arts programs that are out there across the state.
I'll just add from, I believe this is Washington County again, one of the tactics we have seen administrators use is to preserve dance, is to make it a prerequisite as part of other activities that maybe are more culturally valued, like sports. So, if you want to do marching band, you need to take a prerequisite dance course in order to have the coordinate, you know, a certain coordination for a marching band experience. So, there are also maybe ways to integrate the prerequisite of dance such that it becomes more incentivized within the current culture around, you know, the current cultural values.
Very good. Dr. Michael?
Two quick comments and then a question. The first, you know, we talk about this in math a lot. It's just not cute for us to talk about not being strong math students. We would never say, "I'm not a good reader." We far too often have people that say, "Oh, I'm not good at math." And I would encourage us to similarly lean into the arts, to often... Too often, thankfully, nobody's done it today, but we too often say, "Oh, I can't sing, I can't draw, I can't do this." And I encourage all of us to model and lead, and I'll do it. You know, I lean into vocal music. I sing in church. I was a singer all the way through in school. And I challenge us, you know, we talk about our culture, this is a core part of our curriculum, to lean in and to speak not, you know, there are jokes and there are fun, but those of us that have had the opportunity to truly have a well-rounded education to lean into it and speak that into what we value in the core work of schools. The second thing, and this is something, you know, colleagues, that I'm thinking a lot about as we're implementing the blueprint. The arts is indeed part of the core work of public education. We saw it in COMAR. As it is our role to understand the interplay between the general allocation per student and how that's playing out on the ground. And so I challenge each of us to really attend to, what does this look like? You know, when we have the balance of the funding coming through the blueprint, to understand that the allocations are there so that local districts, in a way, so that local districts can ensure that students truly have that well-rounded education. You know, Jim Collins famously said, "Let us not be constrained by the tyranny of 'or,' but deliver with the genius of 'and.'" And I would say it's such a critical piece. There are pieces that locals will be able to make decisions upon. We're seeing some of that as we're making strong budget decisions. Arts cannot be one of those. It is a core part of our work. So just want to challenge us, the interplay for us is to figure out the frameworks that we're giving locals and how that plays out, and critical that we're really leaning into our regulations and to ensure that there's feasibility there. Last, I just ask our guests, thank you, Ms. McGrane and Mr. Dayton for joining us. Might you speak a little bit more to the promise in terms of teacher pipelines? Any thoughts and guidance that you have for us as you're seeing the interplay between teacher pipelines and how we might be able to continue to support that?
Something that we are seeing is an increasing number of conditionally-certified arts teachers. So we have, Maryland is one of the best states for artists. We have per capita, I think, possibly the highest amount of money going into the art sector as a whole. And so we have a really robust, you know, community for artists. And there are a lot of artists out there who are interested in teaching, but the pathway to go from being an artist to becoming a teacher can be challenging. Something that we've heard in particular is folks not being quite sure how to navigate the systems. There's different requirements, regulations from the state, and then once you get into the LEAs. And so we are starting to do, we are doing a little bit of work on our own to try and help kind of consolidate that and be able to help better direct prospective conditionally-certified arts teachers. But I would say that is a big window of opportunity to better support folks coming in from those alternate pipelines. And then there are also a lot of challenges coming in from the traditional pipeline through higher ed colleges and universities, especially with some of the new requirements from the blueprint. We've heard from folks in our arts higher ed circles that, for example, the number of days required for an internship is making it increasingly difficult for students to be able to complete that and then come into becoming an arts teacher, especially if they are focusing on their arts discipline in addition to all of their teacher preparation. It can in some cases extend, so they might need to go to college for five years rather than four, then that becomes a financial burden, and there's kind of like a snowball effect there. So I would say on the traditional pipeline, that's kind of the big issue, and then needing more support for conditionally-certified teachers, which again, and we are working on that with the Fine Arts Education Advisory Panel.
And one more word on the higher ed front. Currently, I don't believe any Maryland universities offer a theater education certification program. So there, and there are fairly few that offer dance education certification. That maybe goes back to your question as well, Dr. Getty, where there is both a lack of funds for dance educators, but also a lack of homegrown dance educators based on the opportunities for in-state education. So there just need to be more opportunities to become an arts educator within the state higher ed system.
Thanks, Peter. Go ahead.
Ms. McCusker.
Just to piggyback on that from the higher ed perspective, the pipeline for teaching, not only can it be five years because you have your core coursework in education that you're taking, and you have to take all of your discipline's core coursework. A lot of the coursework that is required in the discipline is not given as many credits. So if you take University Corral, which you are required to take as an education major. So you take University Corral, it's three days a week, just like a regular course. You have to learn your music, you have to go to the performances, but you only get one credit. So a lot of times, people who are trying to get their certificate, trying to graduate with a music education degree are having to take six or seven courses per semester simply to have a high enough credit course load to be full-time, and it's still taking five years unless you're doing winter mester and summer mester and all of that. Plus the added, you're not only taking your core education praxis testing, but you have to take your music praxis testing. You have to pass all of the testing on your individual instruments, piano proficiency. So there are a lot of hurdles that are there in the arts education because it is really kind of dual-disciplined, because you're not only learning to be an educator, you have to also be an expert in your craft and in whatever your art form is. So that, when young people look at that, that's a lot. And they're not sure that they want to be a year or so behind the rest of their colleagues and have double the amount of testing to take care of at the end of the day.
Interesting. Ms. Ayala?
All right, thank you for the report. One of the issues that educators brought up that stuck out to me was the lack of adequate designated facilities. When I was in elementary school, it's the oldest elementary school in my county, we didn't have a music room. It was like this old storage closet that we used for our orchestra program. And I went to the newest middle school in my county, and even our orchestra room, the technical orchestra room, wasn't large enough to fit our orchestra. We had to use the band room because the architects, I don't know how large they thought a school orchestra was. But I think one of the things we can work on is providing a little more guidance to the LEAs on when they're building new schools, what does that look like for the arts education programs that are going to take place? Like in Howard County, when we were looking at building our newest high school, like one of the things that came up, we looked at the spacing for like our BSAP liaisons and our Hispanic Achievement Liaisons. It was too small, and a lot of things go underlooked like that, including our orchestra rooms and our band rooms. So I think, like I looked it up, and the last time the State Department of Education gave any guidance around like fine arts when it comes to building schools was in 2001, which was before I was born. So I think if we are able to, I think if we can, you know, provide some more guidance around what a classroom should look like, what an orchestra room should look like, what a band room should look like, what an arts classroom should look like, I think that would be some valuable guidance for our LEAs.
Thank you so much for bringing that up. And I want to add to that also, in addition to guidance, having representatives involved in that process. So for example, with the new high school in Howard County, I'm pretty sure Teri Eberhart, who's supervisor of fine arts in Howard County, was involved in the process there to make sure that the facilities were adequately designed for the arts. So that, yes, thank you.
Dr. Johnson?
I suggest that we have a discussion with MHEC around the conditional teacher preparation program. It is, I'm just working with some of the conditional teachers. It's a turnoff for them when they find out that they have another five years that they have to commit themselves to, and the financial burden is so that within, as soon as their conditional certificates lapse, they're out of the classroom. So I really think we need to talk with MHEC in terms of colleges and universities and their preparation programs.
Very good. Excellent. Excellent. Ms. McCusker?
I'm going to bring up one more thing. When you, in your slides, my computer just turned off, so I don't know which the number is anymore, but in one of your slides, it was about some of the barriers, and one of them said the standardized testing and that, you know, what gets tested gets everybody's attention. I don't want us to go down the road of thinking that the way to solve that is to start putting standardized testing in place for fine arts classes.
Thank you.
That is a non-starter, and I will fight anyone tooth and nail on that one. I'm not big on testing anyway, but you start putting that into the fine arts, and then I think you take away the entire essence of it. So, yeah, there it is, overemphasis on testing standardized subjects. And there are locals who are doing it. And it blows my mind to think that you are doing standardized testing on elementary school music in places because they think it legitimizes it and makes it a core subject because it's being tested. That is not what makes a course legitimate, so let's not fall into that trap, please.
Thank you for that. And I just want to also emphasize the point that with the emphasis on standardized testing subjects, the arts support all of that learning. And I think, again, that's where we can fall into a trap of having this narrow focus on, okay, I need to get my ELA test scores, so I need to only focus on ELA versus if students have access to that well-rounded education, robust arts access, that's ultimately going to benefit ELA as well.
To go back to, I keep going back to Washington County. My conversation with the LEA lead out there was so wonderful, but the reason there is an arts magnet school out there is because a superintendent of Washington County about a decade ago, or maybe even more, decided that the arts were far less important than more time for math and English and essentially nuked their arts course time, and then a subsequent superintendent created an arts magnet school to begin to rebuild some form of arts infrastructure within that county. So this is something that we have already seen happen before, and we would suggest that the arts maybe point a path forward for different learning modalities that speak more to individual students that maybe standardized-tested subjects should consider.
Excellent. Excellent briefing, great questions. Again, thank you so much, and come back again, give us an update, and make sure that we keep arts as part, we keep our eye on arts in terms of making sure that it is something that we value and support. So help us to remember, help us to stay focused. Big one? Absolutely. But I think from what I hear, though, that's not always well-understood. Okay, all righty. Thank you much, appreciate it.
Thank you, we're so grateful.